Good evening. Thank you for being here. We're excited again to have a candidates forum. We have four candidates that are running for two seats in the coming election on November 8th, and three are with us tonight, so hopefully we get some good questions and some good answers as well. I want to thank Nina DiMarci and Cypress College for helping us put on this event. It's one of the things that we feel from the Chamber of Commerce that is part of our duty, and we certainly thank you for being here. We do have some members of our city council that are here tonight. Mayor Protem Paulo Morales, right over here. Councilmember Stacy Berry. Couple of former mayors, Leroy Mills. And Dr. Pecashon Ryan. Doctor, same here. Thank you for the evening. At this time, I'd like to call on Bob Simpson, the president of Cypress College, for a few words of welcome, and then we'll get right to the program. Doctor?
Thank you. Welcome to Cypress College. There is an awful lot that's good about the college, a lot of things going on, but that's not our purpose this evening. We're here for this candidates forum, and we are really thrilled to be able to host this forum. I have to admit that I am addicted to politics. I'm a political junkie. I follow everything, and of course, what's dominating the airwaves right now is national politics. But I've always believed that local politics is much more important and much more effective for us. We have a much more profound opportunity to affect our lives locally by participating locally. And when I think about our political system, it is, I'm so proud to be an American in the sense that we have, in our power, we the people, in a six-year period of time, to replace every elected official in this country. House of Representatives every two years, President every four years, Senators every six years, every one of them stands for reelection in a six-year period. It's an awesome power and an awesome responsibility. And for all of you who are here informing yourselves and making informed choices about your local representative, your local government, I just want to express my sincere appreciation for your willingness to be here, to listen and to participate. We are better off because of your participation. With that, welcome to Cypress College and enjoy the forum. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor Simpson. Just to give you the format, what we will do, about a minute and a half for each one of our candidates to give the opening statement, and then we will go to the questions, and that will be one minute for each one of our candidates. They will all answer the same question, so if you have questions that you want everybody to answer, this is the time for you to fill out that form and get that to us. And then in the summation, it'll also be a minute and a half. So we will go as long as we have questions. So if there are 500 questions, we will be here until 3 o'clock. And we have a screening, a screening, no, screaming, screening committee of one. Linda Keenan is going to be doing that, so make sure we get those. Okay, we have three candidates, so I'm going to call on our first candidate, Councilmember Rob Johnson. You have a minute and a half if you would like to take it from there.
Yes, and before we get started, I would like to thank the Chamber of Commerce for tonight, and also Cypress College for hosting the debate. I'm not sure how many of you know that the college is celebrating the 50th anniversary, so congratulations to Bob Simpson and his staff. Let me introduce myself. My name is Rob Johnson. I'm your current council member from the City of Cypress. I served as mayor in 2015. I also serve on several other boards as part of the Board of Directors for the Orange County Fire Authority, the Orange County Waste Commission, and also on the Chamber of Commerce. To give you a little background information about myself, I've been married to my wonderful bride for 37 years, Nancy, and we've been homeowners for 35 years. We've been in Cypress for 20 years. We've had two wonderful, raised two wonderful daughters that have graduated from college, become professionals, and living on their own and self-sustaining, so that makes us empty nesters. So fantastic, except for we do have a dog at home. We are active parishioners at the St. Ernest Church here in Cypress. Gentlemen, boys, I've been working for 26 years for the Crystal Geyser Water Company. In my role, I serve as the Western Regional Sales Manager overseeing five states and managing all trade channels. People ask me political views. I like to consider myself as liberal in my heart, but conservative in my wallet. I would also like to say that I have four mission statements. The first one is being pro-business. Second one is looking at our safety of our community and also of our residents, being supported and endorsed by our police department and also our firefighters. I'd like to say that I also support our schools, paid at college, and also looking at a budget that is sound-minded and for the future of our students. So with that, I thank you very much.
Mayor Yarke.
Thank you. Hi. I'm obviously at this point a resident of Cypress. I've been here for over 26 years, and I recently retired after being a lawyer for 30 years and owning my own law firm. For the last four years, I've had the honor of serving as your city council, and I'm currently a mayor. During my four years on council, I learned a lot. It's much more difficult than I first anticipated, but I've started some new programs that I'm really proud of. And first of all, I established the Veterans Recognition Program, and the joy that our city council gets recognizing our own and giving a thanks for their service. I also started the Cypress Women's Conference. After some strong opposition, we got it started, and now we've had it for four years, pros every year. We've had over 100 students there this year from our local students and over 300 attendees with some great speakers. This year went tri-city, and next year we may be adding a fourth city. I also, one of my goals was to improve the city's involvement with this college. We've always had a decent relationship, but we haven't really used each other's resources like we should, and I'm very excited to say it's working, and we just had our first ad hoc committee meeting with their leaders and our leaders, and hopefully we'll all be helping each other out in the future. I also created the Cypress Coordinating Committee, which is a way of getting our volunteer organizations to work together and share information, and to market a new one that I'm very excited about. We've got it in the works for the spring. We're going to have arts on the ground, where we'll have some of our musicians and some of our artists, and we're going to have some college students and high school students, and I think it'll be a real positive experience. And I've got a red card looking at me. So I just wanted to say, my focus is to listen and try to represent what the people want when I'm up there voting on the dais, and if you feel like me, I'll continue to do that. Thank you.
Our third candidate is Mike Shopman. Mr. Shopman?
I'm Mike Shopman. I attended Cypress College a while ago. I've been a resident of Cypress for a little over 10 years. The truth is, I'm having a hard time tonight. My son, he was born with a genetic disorder known as Tuberculosis Complex. He's got thousands of tumors throughout his body, his brain, his skin. About an hour or two ago, I had to go to the hospital, and I'm having a hard time just being here. People that are married, you know, lucky for me, my wife said it's important for me to be here, so I'm a little, you know, having a hard time tonight, so please, I'd like to apologize ahead of time. As anything, people have asked to donate to my money campaign, and if you'd like to donate, donate to the Tuberculosis Alliance, Tuberculosis Complex Alliance. Sorry. I'm not going to go off any notes. I'm going to go off my heart. I just think that it's kind of wrong to be prepared ahead of time and just read off what you want people to hear, what you think is right, and tonight I'm just going to tell you what's going on from my heart, so I hope that you can accept that my answer, my views, clean with some of the people that are here, but they kind of come directly from what I feel, from what I mean. I see some looks from different people, you know, it's a different way to do this, but I think it's the right way to do this. I think it's the honest way. So I was a product designer at Cypress College, I lived here for 10 years, I went to Fuller College, I went to Golden West, took me along, given the permits to go to Cal State, finished their co-justice degree, and now I'm here hoping to represent the residents of Cypress, so please bear with me. I still have a difficult time trying to figure out where I should be right now. Thank you.
Thank you. I would be remiss if I did not also include Tim Keenan, who's a former mayor of Cypress. So, Tim, thank you for being here and helping us. Okay, we're going to start off each one of the questions we've asked of all the candidates in order, and then we'll flip from one to two to three to two, three, one. So the first question will be directed to Rob Johnson. What would you do to reduce the cost of city government? And the council here is standing that's voting on keeping a 1% sales tax. Would you be in support of increasing sales tax here in Cypress?
Being fiscally conservative, I like it the City of Cypress as being fiscally sound. We have a $40 million budget, which we have 25% in reserves. Looking at also our budget, I don't think we need to look at potential of the sales tax. I understand the fact that other cities are doing that, but I think it's been passed city council members and mayors that have worked together to make sure that we do keep a sound budget.
No, I would not. I'm against any taxes. I've had my own business for years, and if you don't have the money, you don't spend the money. So I think that was the point where we couldn't handle our operating budget, we would have to cut expenses. Our biggest expense is staff, and yes, every one of them are needed, but when the recession hit last time, a lot of people were not replaced when they left, and those are the kind of things you have to do to tighten up your belt. We pay far too much taxes. We don't need another load of taxes.
Well, somebody real famous said no any taxes, correct? So I'm completely against any more taxes. I do believe that we should bring in more businesses that are more retail, type of retail businesses. We have a lot of big businesses like Vans. We're losing them. We're losing, we lost Bandai, we're Mary Kay, we got Wool's Rice, but all these businesses are not collecting taxes, they're not selling retail goods, so they're not bringing anything to the city other than, I guess, employment, and a lot of these employers, hopefully they can convince their employees to move to the city to bring business here. One thing that I can believe, even though we are fiscally sound, and it looks like we're doing okay, there's a lot of wasteful spending. One of the big things, and one of the problems that I'm having, is that there's things like having a budget set aside of $100,000 for a Facebook and Twitter page, and if you look at the annual, what is it, the cars? Come on, Mayor, help me out. If you look right here, the city manager guarantees, I think it's 815 likes or 1,000 likes within two years, and if anybody's here active on Twitter or Facebook, it doesn't cost $1,000 to get that many likes. So I feel like, or $100,000, $100,000, so I feel like that's wasteful spending, and we've got to be a little more careful when we spend our money.
Okay, the next question will start with Mayor Yarke. What is your position on Major G.G.?
Oh, give me the easy one. Okay. Okay, first of all, the best thing about G.G. is it's up to the voters. Your vote is just as important as mine's, and this is not something that's going to be voted on from the dais. So my first inclination was not to stay the position because my opinion's no more important than yours, and it's not really my right to try to influence your vote. You get to go out there and decide what you want, but I decided that was a cop-out. So, and a few people here know that I don't want to do this, but I'm going to tell you that I'm going to vote yes on it. There's certain reservations, but I know there's serious interest by a hospital, and if this doesn't pass, the property is already zoned for a hospital. And I think the hospital at the corner of Denny and Cerritos is going to bring in a lot of unwanted traffic and a lot of, a lot of things that I don't believe the rest of the residents are going to be able to enjoy or get any benefits from. I would love it to stay a great park. I mean, I'd love it to become a great park. I wish we could be heard from it and have, but it's private property. And, you know, the 20 acres will be zoned for a park, and I know some people have some questions. I did inform them on Monday night, they are going to make a gift of it to the city, though that hasn't happened yet. And I think it's our last opportunity, and the majority of it is single-family residences, which is what our city's made of. And I really would love some new retail. I could tell, we need it damn good to get our own. We don't have one in the city. So, you know, I know we've been buried once, and that worries me, but I don't like the alternative.
Mr. Shopman?
I think when I first got here, I gave you the answer right here. It's a no on G.G. In 1987, the voters or the residents here in Cypress recognized that there was a little too much power with the city council in zoning different areas, and they decided that we're going to go ahead and give that power to the people, give that power to the residents as to what we should do and what's right. The reason, she says that there's going to be a problem with traffic because she's going to go ahead and vote yes on G.G. That's going to bring, excuse me, that's going to bring retail, that's going to bring residences. I have, well, I have five children, one died, but I have four children in her life, and it's hard to keep them all in one school. I have friends that have two kids here and two kids there. If you're going to bring more people into the city, you probably shouldn't have closed down, what are you closing down, come on, Mayor? Two schools? You're closing down two schools in the council? Three? Is that right? Three? Three schools? But yeah, she's telling us we should bring in more families, more children. Come on, guys, let's be realistic. The L.A.R., what does that stand for, brother?
Los Alamos Race Track.
Los Alamos Race Track, sorry. I told you my mind's somewhere else, so I'm going to get it out, come on, Mayor. That's where our, you know, our, anyways. Los Alamos Race Track has been trying for the past over a decade now to try to make money on their property there, and I understand if you buy property, they bought it in the intent, and knowing that it's supposed to be used for public use only, but they've been trying for so long, and they've got the money. It's gas, man, guys, come on. They have the money to, all right, she's waiting, I guess I should stop talking, but they have the money to put up these signs and we don't. If you look at my hands right here, I haven't taken any money from special interests. My hands have made these signs that you see throughout the city, every single one of them.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. I believe the citizens of Cypress, myself, need to make a realistic vote on what is to come of the racetrack. Council, with myself included, we had asked for the racetrack people to get together and do a town hall meeting, and not just one or two, but with the City of Los Alamos and Cypress, to get together and find out what did they see the visions for the racetrack in the future. And I liked some of the ideas that came across, and that was mixed use, because they're looking at the future of not only now, but they're looking for the future of our youth. And when you look at mixed use, you're looking at restaurants. That's what the people want if they want to, we don't have a fine tablecloth restaurant. We got Chili's, we've got Red Robin, a couple other ones. We want fine tablecloth restaurants. We want theaters. When we go to theaters, we have to go to that other town square that's got a circle around it to go there. They wanted park space. We see that the schools are, there's a couple that are closed down, and they've cringed on some of the green space where the kids play soccer, and so it's becoming really difficult for AYSO and other soccer teams to practice. So here we've got mixed use where we could get 20 acres of park. What does 20 acres of park get you? It gets you a park very similar to Oak Knoll, where you could probably put three soccer fields, gymnasium, and still have a place to walk, and maybe even walk your dog as well, too. So I like that, and the fact of new homes amongst Cerritos. So I'm definitely a yes, and I look for the future of our youth. Thank you.
Okay, the next question is directed first to Mike Shopman. How do you suggest we deal with the growing homeless population in our city?
I'm going to add to the last question and I'll answer that one. None of these things are promised. They don't promise us that they're going to hand us over property for a park. They don't, it's so big, if you look at, you know, you just got to go ahead and read this. How many are actually residents here? Raise your hands, please. Think about that. It's a little less than half. Most of your students here are probably getting extra credit or whatever, you know, I don't know. But that's the problem, is we don't have too many Cypress residents active here, you know, making a difference. Just go ahead and read about it. It's so big. One of the big questions is, is is that park that they say they're going to give us, are they going to rent it to us? Are they going to give it over to us? It's just, there's so many hopes. Excuse me, sir. There's someone, this guy's, all right, I won't go there. Do you know where a troll is? An online troll?
Excuse me?
All right, so thank you. I'm going to need help. What was the question? Please repeat it. I don't know. So much.
I would admonish all the candidates to kind of stick to the question that we're talking about. You can certainly do it in summation, but let's try to stick to the question because I think everybody wants to know what's going on.
My mind's somewhere else, Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Johnson, same question?
Same. I believe the question had to do with homelessness, and when we look at homelessness, that's just not a problem in Cypress, that's a problem that's all over. A lot of cities are now faced with the issues of mental health, drug addiction, people that are losing their homes, don't have a place to go back to live with their parents, and are faced with other means. We look at the resources that different cities are doing. I know, I read in the City of Utah that they've knocked down 72% of their homelessness, they build shelters. Of course, when you build shelters, everyone says, yes, shelters is the idea, but if you look in any city, they'll say, yes, but build it in the other part of the city and not in my next-door neighbors. We look at, I've discussed with our chief, Cox, about the homelessness problem. We had one officer that was out trying to look at the different people that were homelessness and try to determine whether they're local residents or if they were just drifting through. We've now expanded now to three officers in charge of homelessness. We've tried to do away with some of the encampments that are taking place on, just off of Orchard towards the businesses, so we are trying to be positive towards homelessness while also recognizing some of the problems that they're experiencing. We're thankful that there's many churches in the City of Cypress and outreach groups to try to help them out, and I thank them for their service. Thank you.
As probably many of you are aware, they just recently approved and will be opening a new homeless shelter for Orange County, and we have, as Councilman Johnson stated, we have one officer who's full-time and other officers that help. At this point, the last count was six to eight homeless in Cypress, so we're lucky that we're not plagued any worse than that in the sense of, because they usually don't want help, and so the real skill there is to get them to resources that'll allow you to take them to, and our officers have been fairly lucky. And our officers are pretty vigilant. If you see somebody in your neighborhood that you're worried about, that looks in need or maybe dangerous, they respond very quickly. We're lucky that way. So in the near future, we'll have someplace to take them where they can get long-term assistance, and in the meantime, we just have to hope our police officers can get them directed, because there are resources out there and they'll go to them.
Our next question is directed first to Councilmember Johnson. What is your position on posting the city council campaign financial disclosure forms on the city website?
I believe in that transparency. I believe that it should be open for all to view, and I totally am supportive of it.
I have no objection to it. It just has to make sure that it's done in a way, as probably many of you know, when you put yourself out here and be a public representative, all of your information is on the internet, and so be it. That's what we sign up for. But as long as it's done in a way that doesn't put anybody's information that's private versus their political positions and things that are, should and could be known by voters, there is a real risk. The more you put it on the computer, the more sometimes problems it causes, but you need transparency, and I do think that there are lots of rules out there, and putting it on the internet makes it more accessible, as obviously it will, than...
The past two days, if you've gone to the city website, it's changed completely, as you guys are aware of that. But that was something that was promised a little over two years ago, but somehow they managed to do it in two days. Transparency is really easy. Any of you here that have access to the internet know how easy it is to upload something and have it available to everyone. When you sign up to be a councilman or to represent the people, you sign up to make a lot of your things that you would assume are private public, because the people have to know who's representing them. And I'm going to go back to the last question about homelessness, because I totally missed it. I worked for the Cypress Police Department. I worked alongside Paulo Morales here, okay? He's told me a story of him having a resident help save him, correct? When someone was trying to get your gun. Do you remember Paulo Morales? Do you remember me? Slightly? I've worked with Rock Cox, who is the current city chief of police. The way we handled homelessness back then, this is, oh my goodness, this is almost 20 years ago, okay, is we approached them. The more you bother them, a lot of you here that are young know that if you, a police officer interacts with you, you know, you prefer not to interact with the police, and the more that police officers interact with the homeless, it kind of deters them from being here in the City of Cypress. They don't technically help them in that way, but it scares them from being here and walking throughout our city.
Next question is directed to Mayor Yarke. What are your thoughts on the Soul Source Contract for street sweeping given to Valley Business Services?
I voted against it. I think Valley Vista is a tremendous trash company. They've done, really, our services have increased, and our prices have gone down considerably. But even if they are the most appropriate and the best for street sweeping, and they very well may be, I think it causes, it doesn't pass the smudge. And I think that an open bid should be out there to make sure, and we have something in black and white that shows that we made the best choice for the city. So I voted against it, not because I'm anything against Valley Vista, but because I didn't think it was the appropriate way to do it.
Mr. Shopman?
I think that's the first thing that we see eye to eye tonight, which is, it is a good thing, Mayor. Look, I totally believe in getting as much bids and as many people bidding to try to hope to bring the cost down. There should be transparency. Unfortunately, a lot of these council members from the past and current councilors have accepted money from special interest groups. I was here two years ago, trying to run for city council. I didn't win, obviously. I'm here again, right? And I had a gentleman come up to me and tell me how stupid I am for not accepting money from special interest groups. I refused to meet with the Police Officers Union, the Fire Department, the public workers, all of these people. They don't represent the residents of Cypress. Maybe you can answer this first, Mayor. How many people do you have that actually live in Cypress that work for the city besides the city council members? Come on. Because there's none, if any there. You should probably know those things. Think about that. They're representing the people that don't even live in this city. Come on, guys, what's that like?
Councilmember Johnson?
Let's get us back on track. Have a good, you, street sweeping contract, right? And last call I remember from our council meeting, it wasn't that we necessarily gave Valley Vista's street sweeping business. We partnered with them for trash. They brought in extra services to the contract, graffiti removal, trash bins, they brought in other type of assets to our community. They gave us an 18% decline on our trash for our residents. They gave us over a 33% reduction to our business partners, which some businesses could represent a $600 savings. I just said, since we're already doing business with a company, with our city, with other services, that we give them first shot at looking to see if they can be competitive. I know that we have two street sweeping machines currently that we're using here in the City of Cypress that are basically spent, need to be put in the mothballs. I know Valley Vista has two street sweeping machines that they don't have to buy, they've already gotten ready for us, but let's have them come to us and give them, give us a bid, and then upon the bid acceptance, then they'll go forward, but that hasn't been done yet, so we haven't given it to them.
Okay, the next question is directed first to Mr. Shopman. What are your plans to attract new businesses to our city?
I used to own a business here in Cypress, and I made a mistake about doing the commerce two years ago. I moved under a business myself. But anyhow, what I think could attract new businesses, of course, give them incentives. There's a lot of properties here if you go along the Cantala that are just empty now. We keep scaring away these big businesses that say that they don't have enough room when they're growing bigger than we can accommodate them, and I would have to say that's not true, because there's too many empty buildings. To bring in new business, you know, we have to be a little more active with recruiting them. We have to be a little more active on the internet, and we have to go out there and look for them. We have to spend the money to actually attract these new businesses. Hopefully, the retail, these guys like to eat a lot. You heard how they like to get a new restaurant here in Cypress. Restaurants, apparently, aren't here in Cypress, and they're hungry.
Councilmember Johnson?
I think somebody once told me, it said, build it, they will come. I think when you look at the City of Cypress, and you look to see how safe it is, nice, attractive schools, great-looking parks... attractive schools, great-looking parks, and you look at the businesses that we have, and yes, we've lost some business, but on council here, we've made every efforts to offer brace-type programs to attract both small, medium, and large businesses to the city. And even some of the ones that we've lost, it wasn't a question that they were dissatisfied with Cypress. They either outgrew Cypress or moved to another city that was in a similar, like, take Bandai. Their competition is Mattel. It's over in El Segundo. Their largest contract is Walt Disney. Walt Disney preferred to come down to El Segundo to see all of their toy manufacturers rather than have to drive to Orange County. So we do lose some businesses, but we want to make sure that we partner and be a business-friendly city to make sure that businesses want to come to Cypress. And also the fact that if they do leave, they tell a friend that Cypress is a great place to live, work, and play. Thank you.
Cypress has actually got a remarkable job attracting businesses. Because of our smart forefathers, we have that whole corporate corridor over on Catala. I don't know if you're aware, many years ago, our city was pretty much run by property tax. That has all changed because people like myself and like many of you, the longer you're here, the less you pay in property taxes as compared to renew buyers. So our property tax only supports about twenty percent of our budget. And so the other eighty percent, the large share, that comes from sales tax and other taxes. So we've done a good job. Yes, we've lost some, but boy, we gained some great ones. We have the, she was our elite speaker at the women's conference, the CEO of Earth Friendly Products. I'm sure many of you have gone to the store and seen ECO's products. They just built a beautiful, built out a beautiful warehouse right there in Catala. What a great corporate partner. We just got Rolls Royce. There was an expansion of Seaman's. And there was also, we are doing Manhattan Tours, looking to even take more space in Cypress. So our programs do work and we're very fortunate that we don't have to rely on raising our sales tax or hoping that we'll have new businesses to survive because we're very healthy financially. But we have a fairly young city manager who's very aggressive at approaching new businesses and keeping the current ones happy. So I think we're in a good place.
Our next question is directed to Councilmember Johnson. How are you going to limit the high-density growth in Cypress before it adversely impacts our traffic and other services?
I think it has to do with responsible development. I know our ceiling in our city is like ninety-nine feet. We, I guess, come back to the proposition GG. And here was a clear case where race track owners came back to the city and said, rather than ninety-nine feet, what if we reduce it down to sixty feet? And I thought that was a great effort on their part to say that they want to partner with us. So I think that when you look at the city of Cypress and you add your business community, you look to make sure that you've got respectable buildings and respectable areas. Thank you.
Mayor Yark?
I'm concerned about high density in Cypress. I know it's the wave of the future. I don't know if many of you know Sacramento is trying to take away local zoning and take control of it all the way from all the cities. It almost passed this time. So it could be the wave of the future, but in the meantime, I'm trying to slow it down. I don't want to become Long Beach. We're Cypress. What I love about Cypress is we are mainly a veteran community. Thank goodness we have the corridor on Catala that brings us income that we need, but we still have a beautiful community. So I voted no on certain developments because I think they're too concentrated. But you can't, growth is important. Retailers and restaurants and stores, they all come when things are new. They don't come when you have an older city and as much as Cypress is older. So it's really a balancing act. I think responsible growth, but high density scares me. And as long as I have some input, I will do my best to try to be discriminating about what I've proven and don't approve.
High density scares her, but she's for GG. Think about that. Look, if you know about Cypress, you know that we're a small, you know, type of community, like a Midwestern community. We're not, anybody that lives here knows that when you tell somebody, oh, from Cypress, somebody says, oh, where is that? And that's a good thing. It's because we don't have all that attention and we don't need all that attention. We don't need to bring that attention to Cypress. We need to keep it small and keep it tight. You know, the average home has about three people within their home here in Cypress. And if you think about GG, we're going to go ahead and build retail with high-density homes on top. And there is no, you know, written exactly how it's going to work out, how many homes they're going to put, how many people they're going to bring in. It's just, it makes me a little upset to hear her say she's against it, but yes, she's for something else.
Okay. Our next question is directed first to Mayor Yark. How important is it to you to maintain open spaces in our city?
Well, we are a landlocked city. We don't have many open spaces. We have several small parks and two or three large ones. So to maintain open space, we don't have a whole lot to maintain. So some people say, well, the racetrack. I'm telling you, if you could figure out a way that we could keep a hundred and seventy acres of open space, if it was owned by the city or owned by the county or owned by a, you know, wonderful, rich man who had nothing better to do with his money but give to the city, I'd be thrilled. But we don't have another opportunity for a park other than the racetrack. That's it. And if we get a twenty-acre park, you're never going to get another twenty-acre park anywhere in the city. And as soon as the racetrack closes, which fortunately isn't immediately, because I happen to love having California come there, but you, if you don't take this park opportunity, I don't know if we have another one. So what I love to keep the open space we have, yes, but that's not ours to keep. Oak Knoll's ours to keep. Some other ones that's ours to keep. But if one of you guys or a hundred of you guys want to donate your homes, give the city the money so we could buy more acres for a park, I would be all for it. But unfortunately, it's part of property. And twenty acres is a beautiful park, so I don't, so I guess I think they can answer everything.
She says we're going to get.
I agree.
It's, I believe, a matter of right. Oh, now she's touching me. So let's think about it. She says we're going to get. Think about that, folks. We're going to get it. There's nothing in the ballot measure that says we're going to be given these twenty acres. There's nothing that says they're not going to rent it out to us, that they're going to make it somehow privately, you know, maybe you pay to go in. We're not getting anything. If you make this measure clear, I'm not against building on private property. They bought this property knowing that it was supposed to be for open space. Time to change. They want to make money. We all want to make money, right? So think about that. If they're going to be responsible and give us something that's clear as to what they're going to do with it, if they're going to give it to us, they should just say, we're giving it and donating it to the city of Cypress. And they're not doing that. So come on, folks.
Actually, tune in Monday night.
You forgot which way you go. I think it's Ross.
Tune in Monday night to City Council.
I'll be there. I'll follow you. Yes. Thank you very much, open space. I said, I was a member of the Cypress Recreation and Parks Commission for eight years. Having coached in softball for fifteen years and ASO for four years, I saw the importance of open space. And while serving on the recreation commission, I had asked the question of, how come we have all the little parks? Willow Park, Evergreen Park, Essex Parks. We only have two parks that actually play soccer, softball, or baseball, or even football. And when Cypress was developed, it was always in little pockets. And developers have to give X number of square footage towards recreation when they do develop. And because Cypress was built in pieces, there was never any large partials to put it towards parks. So you look at Cypress and you say, oh my gosh, we don't have little parks. But guess what? We're getting a park, over three acres of park over there off of Walker between Crescent and Lincoln. It's called Mackey. And that's the first time we've had a park of that size since the nineties with maybe Sorrento's. So that's outstanding for Cypress. And if we can get that twenty acres, and granted, if you look at our recreation budget and our reserves, we have like two-point-three. And even if a million dollars would buy one acre, that only gets us two-point-three acres. Plus, we've got to pay for money to put stuff on top of that. So if we can get some development there on Ceritos and it were to pass, then that would give us some revenue to buy and put property and equipment on that open space. So open space is very precious, but again, I recognize private property rights. Thank you.
The next question is directed first to Mr. Chapman. Valley View is one of the main streets in our city. And with the drought and the center medians seemingly not in disarray, but deteriorating, what are your thoughts about how the city might upgrade that landscaping area?
Well, let's not overpay a lot of our public employees. Let's spend money right. Let's not spend a hundred thousand dollars on a Facebook page. One thing I like to do is I like to apologize to this gentleman. He interrupted me and I got a little upset. That was a mature matter, but I'm sorry about that. I am a little upset, but I apologize. Please accept it. But I think the only thing we do is just continue to spend money wisely, continue to put money where it needs to go, work with the residents, get those bids in. Don't have connections to special interests that have connections to county firms, that were former mayors, that still have connections to these guys. It all, you know, it just, they all have to shake hands. So just, you know, if they talk about transparency, let's put that stuff out there. I can put all of this right now in the area. It's not that hard, but just be honest about what's actually going on and take in those bids. And I'm pretty sure we'll get a bunch of bids that will make it affordable and easy enough for us to take care of those center medians. Could you phrase the question a little bit, please? The question?
Turn my mic on here. The Valley Vista and some of the other main streets where the landscaping is.
Valley View.
It were Valley View. It's more a case of how are we going to handle the drought and the medians that at some time will probably have to be redone.
Gotcha. I guess if you looked at the weather forecasters, we were supposed to hit a torrential downpour and everyone's going to have to count the animals two by two while they build their ark, but that didn't happen. We've had to cut back on our water. I think everyone had to cut back on their water to two days and I think we're up to three days. One of the things I like from the city of Cypress is the fact that we look at our landscaping. We look drought tolerant. We look on Moody. You see a lot of the cactus-style plants along Moody. You take a look on Valley View and you look at the type of trees that are there. And we're planting palm trees, which require less water. And while looking at some of the underperforming trees, maybe taking those out. So we are taking proper steps. How many of you know that Cypress was voted for, I think, the eighteenth straight year of Tree City USA? So Cypress is doing a great job when it comes to landscaping and trees. And if you looked at City Hall, it wasn't the concerts on the green or the concerts on the ground this year in the summertime. But we've brought in truckloads of water from other areas, reclaimed water, to make sure that we're trying to capture the best needs of our community and also our landscaping as well, too. Thank you.
Cypress has developed, it was presented less than a year ago, a really long-term strategic drought planning. And medians are the last to be improved because the state mandates that you cannot water the medians. So there is a plan in place. Each year, they're going to be replacing certain parts of drought-affected areas. So Cypress, instead of using the money they used to use to plant all the trees because it's so hard to sustain trees, they're going to use that money to replace many of them with drought-tolerant plants. As a side note, I'm on the Orange County Sanitation District, which works with the Orange County Water District. And we have what we call GWRS. It's a groundwater replenishing system. And Orange County is so lucky that, you know, we are up to one hundred million gallons a day that is recycled from our drains and our waters and our toilets, and it gets put back in the groundwater. And that's why we are not in the drought situation the rest of the country, as the rest of the world is actually flying in to see what we've done in Orange County. And that's why our water usage didn't have to go down. We only had to go down at the worst at sixteen percent. And now that's been raised. We have no restrictions anymore. So Orange County, thank goodness, was planned ahead and Cypress is planning to.
Turn back on. Next question is directed to Mr. Chapman. What do you see as your role as a city official elected as it relates to the community?
Look, I'm available on Twitter, I'm available on Instagram, I'm available on Facebook, I'm available on my phone. You have my texts. It's just communicating with the public. I've grown up around this area. I grew up and I went to Western High School. I'm on the border. I went to Oregon State University. I'm a border man. I'm in Cypress. My wife lived in America too for fifteen years now. Grew up here in Cypress and I dated her just after high school, after college. I spent a lot of time here in Cypress. I've seen how it's changed. I work for the city of Cypress. The one thing that I want to bring to the table is actually listening, actually taking into consideration what the residents want as a whole. One thing that I've kind of bothered with is the whole GG thing. We have, you know, a large group, hundreds of residents here in the city of Cypress that are against Measure GG. But we don't have a large group, hundreds of residents that are for GG. Think about that. There's no group that's got together other than L.A., Los Alamos Racetrack or Racecourse. And like anybody who's smart enough knows that a lot of times the politicians who ever puts in the most money ends up getting what they want. And they're spending a lot of money and, you know, the residents don't have that money to get that. But like I said, it's just bringing in, listening in the air and actually working with the public and the community. Oh, okay. Thank you very much. I think if you're going to become a public official, you have to make yourself available to the public. We're all public servants. We're not here in Cypress, we're not career politicians. I consider myself very open, very approachable, a good listener. I think working for the Crystal Hazard Water Company, they're also respectful to know that I put my time into the community. Knowing the fact that sometimes late at night, I will be spending a lot of hours trying to make up for those days and events that I do attend in the city of Cypress. I'm very lucky to be able to work out of my house. So some days could be a pair of chores, other days a tie. But I make myself, again, available to the city of Cypress and very fortunate to be a member of the council. Thank you.
Well, one thing I've learned the last four years, being a leader, I thought this was a small city without a lot of problems and it's very difficult. You're trying to balance what, I try to be the voice of the people, but everybody's voice is a little bit different. So I believe the role of a councilperson is to listen, try to represent the people, but also keep the best interests of the city in mind. It's not easy. Sometimes it's down at mean and sometimes it's wonderful. So I think being a lawyer helped because I've learned that you don't really get a whole lot by stopping your foot and making the most noise. You have to learn how, see if you can bring people to a consensus. And consensus means compromise. Some people don't want to compromise, but I think that's what our election process is about. Fortunately, on GG, everybody hits their own boat, thank goodness. And I think that's the way it should be on a subject that bid. But I hope as for the last four years, I've tried to listen and I've tried to do things and make small changes and hopefully over time will make a big difference.
The next question is directed to Councilmember Johnson first. It has to do with the developments across City Hall on Orange and also the now developing area that we have known as the Duke and Duchess area and also the one next to Cypress High School. What was your position on this building and how does it enhance the community?
That's three projects there, so kind of, I'll go all the way. Let's see, the one that drew a lot of the criticism was fifty-three-hundred and fifty-four-hundred block of Orange, which sat right across from City Hall. It was basically zoned as a commercial, but somebody had found out that they could actually convert that to residential. If you look at the space there, it could have been ninety-six units, all spaced in there, given three stories. I was not for that. I think each of the council members sat with the developer, which would have been City Ventures, and said that they weren't necessarily for that and asked to see if they could reduce it. The developer basically said, you've got to look at our investors. They want to maximize the return on their investment. And based on the way that your property is owned and we've already filed for it, we can definitely build at ninety-six. And if you say no, it's only a very narrow potential that we could actually want that one, and they could have sued us for over nine million dollars. If you've got seven, a little over seven million reserves, that would have wiped us out. I really negotiated hard to see if they would reduce that. They came back and their plan was sixty-six units, in some places, three stories. I was the swing vote, I believe, on a three-two vote to say no, knowing I was taking a risk. But again, they could have sued us over that. But they came back and said, what if we reduce it to fifty-two and make it two stories? And I felt that was the best option they could possibly do. And again, I was a 3-2 vote swing going the other way to accept a 52 unit and try and keep our city out of the lawsuit. If you look at the project next to the high school, that was a square that was kind of underperforming, a shopping area. And look at now, you've got 85 degrees, it's an Asian bakery, and that is in high demand. I mean, it just opened just last week and we've got a red ribbon cutting that we're doing tomorrow at 9 o'clock. And I'm already told the parking lot's already full. So you can business like that. That's the type of businesses we want to drag to Cypress. As far as any of the other ones, Duke and Duchess, we look at the business side of the equation of personal property. And they chose not want to continue what Mom and Dad did, and they sold out. And that's what the area is zoned for, is residential. And that's what they did, so I respect their rights.
Mayor Yarke.
There is a strategy when they zone Lincoln and Lincoln Avenue, specific property, other ones, that if you build more homes, it will attract more businesses. And so I think that's how it was originally sold, but it's very frustrating to me when they're taking away businesses. Like when they take away Duke and Duchess to put in condos, I totally know. On City Venture, I don't know if many of you guys know, it's a very complex issue, but we all thought it was. In fact, even our biggest builder thought it was commercial all these years and it was going to stay commercial. And if they would have known it was residential, they probably would have built years ago. But we found out that in 2004, some mysterious overlay of the zoning in almost all of our commercial properties double-zoned and also be high-density residential. So it was a long, arduous process, but very recently, we got that double overlay taken off. So our commercial properties will stay commercial properties. On Lincoln Avenue, I've said no to a lot of those, but at some point Sacramento will come down on us because you have to have certain amount of zoning to allow multifamily residential. And if you don't, the state can take away and not give you any of your property taxes, so on and so forth. So it's a very tricky, difficult, complicated issue. I try my best to keep out high density. You can't always do it. On City Venture, that started out to be my biggest fight. I learned more about zoning laws than I ever wanted to research for hours and came up with arguments. And when they said they wanted to sue, the lawyer and me said, "Sue us. We spend hundreds of thousands a year on legal fees. Come on." And I think it was finally that we got three votes finally to say no to a development that forced them to go back to the bargaining table. Not that I want to do that all the time, but I think you're going to have some multi-residential. There's no choice. Sacramento makes us. But let's pick and choose and try and be selected by what's built and where it's built. And that, I have put a lot of effort there. And let's hope that we can continue to at least keep it at a manageable rate until Sacramento takes all the control away, which we hope doesn't happen.
You know, I'm not an attorney, but the mayor is, so I'm going to have to go with what she said as to, you know, how complex this whole issue is. I wasn't aware of a lot of things. Just like you guys probably learned a lot, I learned a lot about what she said, and I hope it's true. But I am completely against, you know, high-density housing and bringing in too many residents and too many tight spaces. It's going to bring in more kids. We have, we don't have enough schools to, you know, to bring in as many people. It's going to bring in high traffic. But like she said, legally, we can't do anything about it. I guess it's just, we have to work with them and try to bring in the minimal amount of residences that we can and keep our, you know, small town going.
Okay, our next question is directed at Mayor Yarke. I believe that's where we're going. This has to do with the city's relationship with utilities. How do you feel that the city is doing with its relationship with the various utilities that we deal with? And are there any changes coming with utilities, re-rates, and any other regulations?
Cypress has a really good relationship with especially Edison and Southern California Gas Company. And there's, I think, while we speak the rate change, and that's not something that city officials get to deal with, that's something that if voters don't want it to happen, they have to go out to these hearings of these utilities put on and object to the rate increases. We don't have any control over it. We're fortunate that things like our water district, they all have city representatives, so there's input from city and board directors. But Edison and South Cal have been very, very responsive to any of our needs. And I don't know, probably a lot of you have seen that they, Edison is coming in and changing, modernizing all the light poles throughout the city at no cost to us. Some inconvenience, but... And then when the water district, we've all had tremendous increases in our water. And then on top of it, when you start using less, they raise their rates more because they're not making as much money. So it's really, seems unfair, but important that we as city council have the control over it. Hopefully, you guys get the words and maybe at some point we could say, "No, it's enough and go to those public utility commission meetings when they want rate increase." But as an informational relationship, it's very, very frequent and open and positive.
So like the mayor said, there's not much we can do or there's not much the city council can do. It is up to the voters and you just have to be active and you have to go to those commission meetings, you have to take part in those commission meetings. And the truth is, I'm not too familiar with how to answer this, so I'm going to go ahead and let the councilman go ahead and answer this.
Thank you very much. When it comes to utilities, we know that there's public utilities, commissions, they set the rates. We can't always agree with it. We look at our water supply. We know we get some Golden State water. We know we also import some in Colorado, as well as some of our own groundwater. It is something that's of uncontrollable nature. We know that we entertain a lot of the different companies, gas company, the water company, as well as the electric company to come in and speak to our residents at city council meetings, I mean, encourage them, so they can become informed as well, too. We know that lately, we've seen in the city of Cypress some light poles being changed out, where their concrete's a little bit more energy efficient, of which if that can reduce our rates, I'm all for it. At the same token, you see some pipes and plumbing being changed in the city. That's not our utilities company, that's the city of Cypress that's using some of their capital CIPs to change that out. So as we look at aging infrastructure, we're definitely trying to make a positive change to, for the best assets to our community. Thank you.
We've run the gamut of our questions, so now it's time for summations. The candidates have a minute and a half for their summation, and our timekeepers will keep them to that. So we're going to start off with Mr. Chapman. A minute and a half for your summation, sir.
You're going to have to let me over the summation.
This pitch, this...
Oh, my pitch. My pitch is, I just want to do what's right. I think a lot of these people that represent us, they start off wanting to help the people, wanting to represent the people. And I'm not sure what happens. I'm not sure, you know, who they associate with or what happens. And they, they start to change the way that they initially intended to be or told the voters were going to be. But I'm going to do my best to make sure that I'm available for you guys. I'm going to do my best to make sure that we come together as a community and communicate, make sure that everybody's input is listened to, nobody's ignored. One person you didn't point out up there is a former mayor, Doug Bailey.
Correct.
Former mayor Doug Bailey has been questioned about things in the past, and he's run away from those questions. And those are all things you can see. I'm not going to run away from any questions. If I don't have the answers for you, I'll let you know that I'm going to go ahead and come back and answer. And I'm not going to make things up, and I'm not going to keep quiet. I know that the city does have a lot of liability as to what a councilperson can say, and I'll let you know if that's the case. But I'm just telling you, I'm here to listen to you, I'm here to represent you, I'm here to make the city better. I'm here to just do the right thing, and that's what I intend to do. And that's all I ask for anybody who ends up representing us, is do what's right.
Councilmember Johnson, your concluding remarks.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank my wife and my family for their love and support and their confidence in my abilities to help serve my community, as well as my council colleagues, staff members, and community members, to thank you again for your support. And again, I ask for God's guidance. I've walked over 3,000 doors in the last five weeks to try to get a pulse of the city, to find out what is the concerns of the city, where do we need to move through the future, and what visions that I can bring to a strategic plan to make sure that we meet those needs. So again, some wise to say that we need to keep our budgets sound. We need to have a strong police force to save both our business and our community, as well as strong schools. And anyone that knows me, I'm strong behind volunteerism, and that's what we stand for as volunteerism, I think, those volunteers that serve our community. And so when you look at the ballot, I have number four on the list, but hopefully number one for Cypress. If you're a baseball player batting for, you bet cleanup, so throw me your pitch and I'll hit a home run. So vote Rob Johnson for reelection to city council. Thank you very much.
Mayor Yarke.
You're so clever, Rob. I'm not quite as witty. I have tried working very hard for four years. I know we all don't always agree on everything, but I really do try to be open and honest and I do try to respond. There's several people in this room that have disagreed with me for four years or have really left what I've done for four years, but we still have a good communication. And that's my goal. I will always try my best. I have no personal agendas here. I certainly don't do this for the money. The 800 a month I pay isn't really enough to motivate us. Most people who are up here are doing it because they have a real desire to help out their community. I love Cypress. I love what all of our organizations do. And I'm too involved in them, and that's good, but my puppy's suffering because of it and my husband, but I love it. And the more I know about Cypress, the more I love it. And I just hope that you'll vote for me so I can be here the next four years and continue my journey.
Ladies and gentlemen, our candidates for city council, Neil Yarke, Councilmember Johnson, and Mike Chapman. We thank them for their time. We thank you for being here. On behalf of Cypress Chamber of Commerce, our board of directors and our members, we appreciate your time, and we hope that if you have additional questions, that you will check with our candidates and vote November 8th. Thanks for being here.